...business tonight is approval of the minutes from last meeting. Actually, minutes of 12, December 11th, January 8th.
I'll make a motion to approve those two minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we had another case tonight, 5254 Channing Street. It's been put off for a month, so if anybody is here for that, you probably want to come back. So, can we have a motion to do that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue 5254 Channing Road for one month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. So, our continued case tonight is 19 Coolidge Hill, and it looks like you're all set to... So, why don't you tell us what's changed?
Sure, absolutely.
Or just where we stand at the moment?
Yeah, sure. First, I'd like to apologize for the late submission. We were scrambling over the last couple of weeks. As you'll see tonight, you'll see a bunch of changes that are pretty substantial, and so that was the weak reason why we didn't get those to you until yesterday, so we apologize for that. We'd also like to thank the Planning Department, Planning Board, and the many neighbors with whom we've met on this proposal the last, you know, couple of years now. The project's been difficult at times, but it's resulted, in our view, humbly in one of the most unique neighborhood-friendly designs for building of this type. You know, in fact, no other project use that we believe has such a benign infrastructure impact, yet offers the kind of substantial community benefits and betterments of our proposal, including, but not limited to, meaningful property taxes, open space, community amenities, architectural design, and lead sustainability.
Did you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry, Paul Ferreira with Blue Hawk Investments.
And can you speak into the microphone a little more?
Absolutely. Is that better?
Yeah.
I know we've spent a great deal of time over the last, at the last presentation, so I want to be efficient with the, you know, with the board's time. Our presentation tonight will focus primarily on the changes from our last plan, and we're certainly available to address any questions. You or the members of the community may have. Again, in the spirit of efficiency, you know, I just want to highlight some of the concerns that the board had raised previously. Inconsistency in the application of plan submission, getting close to 250 feet without a break, visual break, improve the visual experience along Coolidge Hill Road, can we install a green wall on the south side of the building? You know, could the community amenity be dedicated to artist space? Concerned that in lowering the height of the building, there could be visibility to objects on the roof. Coolidge Hill perspective not entirely accurate, as you'll never be able to see the whole wall in that view. Concerned about the accuracy of the screen wall representation, both the horizontal and the vertical. Too high, you know, there's some discussion about, like the Pocket Park and the landscaping plan, low impact on traffic. There was a lot of discussion about the truck loading and better illustration of the movements, better depictions of the material presented, better section of the rain screen detail, and the landscaping looked pretty good. Wanted to see some bigger trees, mature trees. So, all of those things will be presented this evening. But there are six substantial changes in the proposal before you that I think address all of those concerns. First, the height of the building has been reduced from five stories to four stories. Second, the height of the building has been reduced to 23 foot, 6 inches in the rear on the east elevation, 31, 9 inches at the midpoint, and 22 to 42 feet along Arlington Street. So, a full 10 feet lower across the entire building. Excuse me. The elevation of the entire building is now lower than most of the multifamily buildings across the street, 6 inches to 2 feet, which covers the, I'd say, the affected homes of 10 to 12 Coolidge Hill, 14 to 16 Coolidge Hill, and 20 Coolidge Hill. Three, we relocated, and this is, I think, substantial, and we'll show it to you obviously in plan, but we relocated 36,918 square feet below grade. So, 47% of the building is not visible, and so it results in a visible FAR, if you will, of 1.05. Fourth, we shortened the building from 240 to 217. Five, we increased the east elevation setback. So, where the Pocket Park was, was 50 feet at the setback. We moved it to just about 73, 72, 10 inches, I think. So, we increased that width, pushed the building, you know, forward, if you will, but down, and we held the front, you know? So, we didn't move the front of the building at all, we just moved the back and came down. And the last, you know, we substantially increased the landscaping along Coolidge Hill Road, including, you know, proposing installation of some mature trees, the Pocket Park and the area adjacent to Phillipello. So, I'd like to move to the slides. That's a depiction of the rendering, we can come back to that. These two slides are important. They were important. They were so important.
Just a second.
Okay. There you go. So, and you have that in the package, too. So, what appears on the screen here was the original plan, which showed a building that was 240 feet long, 50 foot from the back, 30 foot, you know, 5 inches high, 41 in the midpoint, five stories, and 32 and 52 feet along Arlington. And, you know, the pervious open space and impervious open space, you know, are as indicated. The proposed plan, and I don't know, you can see it better in your plan than you can on the screen, but there's a dotted line that sort of superimposes the prior building. So, and, you know, if we toggle between the two quickly, you can sort of see the changes that we made. You know, so we basically, you know, relocated that top floor down below. The building in the rear shrunk to 23 and 1/2 feet. The midpoint shrunk to 31, you know, .9 inches, and the front is 22 to 42 feet, again, four stories. So, there's 70, almost like, say, almost a 73-foot setback from the building in the rear. And obviously had the effect also of adding, you know, some open space through that increase. So, I'm going to turn the presentation over briefly to Eric Vogel, who's going to speak to some of the exterior design, and I know there's a lot of discussions about rain screen and the materials and the colors and whatnot, and also walk through the renderings, and then I'll come back and conclude.
So, Eric, your firm is...
So, Eric is with, works with me.
So, previously an architect.
I know it's undercover sheet, there's no architect listed, so in-house, in other words.
Yes, in-house.
I mean, we've known that, I just wanted people to understand that.
Yeah, just to make sure. So, my name is Eric Vogel, I'm with Blue Hawk Investments. At the last meeting, and by the way, thank you for having us again this evening, at the last meeting, I think there was a discussion about just clarity of design and some concerns about length of the building at the time and how to sort of articulate the building a little better. We really looked at this, and I think some of the suggestions were to add some windows and recesses and things like that, and we considered those seriously, but we came back to trying to keep it as simple as possible. By shortening the building to 217 feet, what we did is we looked at metering the screen wall along the elevation, and you can see it in the upper, the upper little elevation, and basically breaking the screen wall up with more green walls, which we did check and found out that we can easily plant and manage, very similar to the Lexus dealership down the street.
Very similar to what? I'm sorry.
Like the Lexus dealership down the street. What we, so what we did is we sort of patterned that against the pattern of the buildings across the street, and basically think that this is a really simple way to not advertise the building, sort of let it go away, but to sort of break it down in scale. The screen wall in the last presentation was shown incorrectly, it was a horizontal slat, and we wanted to show you the new, the new design, which we talked about at the last meeting, which is a vertical slat of cedar mounted on a four-inch girt. It is four inches off the wall, and we think, again, this will add another layer in texture to the building by casting shadows against the wall and also creating a depth with the natural material. Secondly, so lastly, and we, again, we apologize for this, our renderer was busily rendering away the building that is shown, is shown as the original length, but it's the four-story option, and we, because we had looked at this previously also. But we wanted to show this for design concept and what this, what this sort of shows and will present to the, for the building. The idea, again, being green walls, mature street trees, trees within the green-planted space adjacent to the building, and then a very lush undercover of shrubs and plantings. So, I think that, thank you very much for the time, and I'll pass it back to Paul.
Yeah, can I ask one point?
Sorry, can I ask one quick question, just to clarify before you step away? So, you're saying that that elevation shows a 240-foot-long building?
Yes.
But in reality, you're proposing a 217-foot.
Yeah, our renderer just, we couldn't get it done quick enough.
Right. So, the height is right.
And we thought, you know, by luck, to some extent, so if you look at the east end of the building, which is the far left, okay, and you were to take out what you see as the panel and then the green wall, that's where the new, the new wall ends or terminates. So, you have that same exact, you know, sort of treatment and condition, except that last panel and green wall go away. And if you go back to this plan, you can sort of see it.
So, it's moving away from the property line on the east?
Correct, correct. And the front is holding, holding in the same space. And again, we apologize.
So, the wall's where the tree, if you go back to the other ones, where the tree is, the one, the tree farthest to the left, that's where the building ends?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, tree and really the green panel.
You should also inspect this isn't here.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Exactly.
Thank you. So, can you see that?
Yep.
So, it's really this whole panel. So, if you go again, back to that, you could see it's sort of right here.
So, there's four, there's four green...
There's four panels on the south and the north side, and this indicates five. So, some people have asked actually, you know, why we didn't make this proposal earlier, and I have to say, you know, is sort of our overall fear of construction costs. You know, we, you know, costs in the region have absolutely exploded, you know, and we suffer and benefit both from perhaps knowing too much, given our construction affiliation and integration. So, but we tested these assumptions and it's been a crazy three, four weeks, you know, because it's very expensive to go down, and, but we're optimistic that, you know, we can deliver this design that we presented tonight, and, you know, we're excited about it. And, you know, we respectfully request that the board support us through this process, and again, we're here to answer any questions you have.
So, just out of interest, is the capacity roughly the same in terms of storage?
It's roughly the same. I think it went up about 4,000 square feet, but again, all underground.
You took off a chunk at the end of the building and the, and the volume went up?
Putting it down.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, I mean, it's, these, these, these facilities are, that they're, like a lot of, you know, uses, but they're super sensitive to loss of square footage, and, you know, it went up slightly, but again, no impact on parking, no impact on traffic, but significant impact on cost. So, we captured it below ground.
Is that what you're showing us?
Yes, I am.
Do we have a staff report?
There's no additional staff report, that, you know, the changes that have been submitted are for the board to review and make a determination. I do also want to note that there may be people in the audience that might have some comments on it.
Yeah, sure. Are you passing the buck to the audience? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, since, we provided a staff report at the last meeting, so...
All right. So, first, let's hear from the board. Any direct questions, follow-up about appearance or size or anything else? I mean, it's the same size building, it's just lower.
Correct.
That's the answer.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it meets any objections that I had last month. I think, I'm surprised you're willing to go down that far, and I'm impressed.
Listen, it's, it's not without, Italians have this say about agile, it's not without agile.
But I don't have any other comments.
Okay, well, I agree, I think it's kind of what we were hoping it might, might have happened. I understand it's more expensive to go down, but obviously it's not to the point where it's not a viable project anymore, or you wouldn't have done it, so I appreciate that. And I think, on the other hand, I'm sort of of two minds about this, because I came into this, and Gideon knows this, because I communicated this to him earlier, but this, this whole thing about getting plans the day of is really starting to become tiresome, and, you know, I, I was tempted to almost just present this as like a vote of protest, that I would either want to continue it or deny it on that basis tonight, but I think you've sort of appeased me in the sense that what you're presenting is, kind of overcomes that desire to sort of make a statement, and of course, the audience for that statement would be like future applicants who probably aren't here anyway, well, unless Mr. York can pass that on. It's just, you know, it's really, it's frustrating to be getting these things the day of and having to download it at work to be able to see it ahead of time, either that or see it for the first time here, but again, I think the product is, you know, changed my mind about that protest vote, so...
Well, again, I, this sounds self-serving, but, you know, we do apologize. I tell you, we, and Gideon knows, we were, last week, we had met, and, you know, it's just, the changes that we've made in a week are unbelievable, you know, and so I just, and, you know, that's our fault, and we just, we just couldn't get it done, so. And, you know, we were testing, you know, as Gideon knows, too, we're testing all sorts of different ideas, too, about going lower, because there were, there were actually options that didn't work to go lower that could cost less money, and, and so, so we tested that, and then that didn't work, and then we had to test it again, and so, so it's just been a, it's been a mad rush, and, again, I apologize for that. We weren't, by the way, the first time we submitted, we submitted, I think, in advance and on time, so, so, but, you know, no excuse, we apologize, you know, you know...
Well, clearly, like, I can see how much change went into it, so I understand what you're saying, is that there's a lot of, it took probably a lot of time to test through all the, work through all these changes, so I understand.
Yeah, and again, I, like you, maybe, and Eric has the brand that is, oh geez, you just get the eraser, it should be easy, and, of course, it isn't like that, so, and, so I apologize for that.
I'm just curious, has there been any study done of potential soil contamination from the prior use?
Yeah, and so, and actually, I had one more thing, there was a question about groundwater that came up as well. So, the environmental, there is, and we submitted this in our, in our original filings, there's some soil that will have to get removed, but it's small quantities, it doesn't affect the groundwater. And then there, there was a discussion, we met with the DPW, again, part of this whole rush to, you know, make sure we're testing this thing right, and, and, you know, while there's some work that needs to be done, mounding analysis and such, that was requested by DPW, we all feel very confident that it will have no impact.
So, just for information, the construction inside, their concrete floors, right, the walls are drywall or plywood? Drywall?
No, it's all concrete. Oh, oh, the interior walls are all, are all steel?
They're all what?
Metal, metal and steel.
As in, what do you mean metal? What is it then?
So, so, it's all a steel, it's a 10-by-10 steel grid, and then the walls themselves, if you will, is a corrugated metal sheet, and it doesn't go forward to ceiling.
Yeah. And the doors are wood or metal?
Metal. Everything's metal, except the, you know, the office. The office will have, you know, some drywall and whatnot.
Yeah, I want to say, I think, you know, last month, I was fairly critical and brought up a lot of points, but I think you've addressed almost all of them, and I think it's a better project as a result, and you've listened to the neighbors, too, so I applaud you for listening to the board and to the neighbors. I do have just one question, and perhaps you've thought of it, you're talking about mature trees, there's, there are a lot of overhead wires in there, do you expect any interference with that, or did you guys, or haven't you tested that yet, so?
We probably haven't tested it yet, but we can certainly, you know, navigate that, I think, properly.
Yeah, the building's pretty, set back pretty far.
That's what I was going to say, yeah.
And how does a green wall look in the winter?
You know, it's interesting, because I asked that same question about a week ago, and I have pictures if you want. So, we went down to the Lexus dealership, and...
Went down where?
To the Lexus, the Lexus dealership, and it's, now, listen, we've had a temperate winter, okay, but it's green and red, and, listen, it's a function of how well you, you take care of it and you irrigate it, and, and so, I think it would look great. And, and, listen, we commit to this town that we'll make sure it looks great, you know, after we're done, you know, but I think it's really a function of, you know, the installation and the execution and the irrigation. And I think where they fail, more times than not, we have found, is that they, they just haven't been installed very well.
So, since we exhausted board question, do it, are there questions in the audience? It'd be appropriate if there are questions, comments, positive, negative.
My name is Aaron Colby, I live at 36 Coolidge Hill Road, and last time I had some real reservations about the project, but I wanted to thank the developers for what they've done. I think the project is much improved, I have complete support for it at this point. I think coming down in size and putting it below ground was fantastic. I'm very grateful that they're willing to work with us on accommodations for our concerns, and so I think it's fantastic. I'm really pleased with what they've done and very supportive, so, that's all.
Where are you in relation to the site? Are you right across from it?
Diagonally across. I'm one or two houses off from being over, across the east end.
Yep. I might want to add, I should have added this to your point, maybe that's where you're going, Jason. We actually met, they don't seem to be here this evening, but we met with the two neighbors, directly across the street as well. We walked them through shadows, we walked them through everything, and I don't want to, you know, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but they, I think echoed what, what you just heard, is that they were very supportive, you know, the shadow has no impact but for like 40 minutes a day for two months, you know, so...
Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
My name's Greg Walsh, I live at 128, I'm all the way over the, the other side of the hill, almost down to Grove Street. I just want to say, I was for this project in the beginning, I think it's 10 times better now than it was in the beginning, and I really commend the developers for really going, really out there to make everybody happy, so I want to thank you very much.
Maybe we should vote before the, never mind, go ahead.
My name is Paul Gorham, I live at 246 Boylston, so I'm not directly in line with this project here, however, my children, they go to Phillipello Park all the time. So, I do have a concern with the driveway aspect of it being between the corner with a walking path and leading to the entrance of Phillipello Park. And I looked on the traffic assessment, and it talks about weekdays, and it talks about early afternoons, but it doesn't talk about weekends, Saturdays and Sundays when the primary, primarily a lot of sports are taking place at Phillipello, and it doesn't talk about later afternoons when soccer and practice and stuff is taking place there. So, my concern is with the driveway situated as it is now, that we're going to have people making a left turn that they're not going to be able to get across, blocking traffic at the intersection. And, you know, potentially people, well, let's put it bluntly, children not looking like they should be for an active driveway. So, if the developers can speak to what they have in mind for that, I'd love to hear it. And then my second question is, with all that impervious driveway there, what's the plan for snow removal? And that's what I have.
What's the plan for what?
The plan for snow removal.
So, the, the traffic patterns in this use are fairly uniform, seven days a week, and so, and that, that was in the, the traffic report. You know, listen, I, you know, we have kids and, you know, we're always concerned about that, and certainly Phillipello is a very active park, and so, you know, and I think we, we could meet with you, you know, offline, too, and show you the landscape plan, because the connect, we've tried, actually, there's a whole front plaza to this from, from, you know, Coolidge wrapping around all the way to the connection to Phillipello, and it's, it's got different materials. It's raised up from the, the entrance into the, into the parking lot, and so, we think, you know, through that and just, you know, you know, we're planning to work with, you know, one of the top operators, you know? So, so, I mean, I think, again, when you think about uses, this is as benign a traffic use as you can get, and so, so, but, you know, we'll make a point to get you, you know, the landscaping plan, which I think, I think, you know, it's interesting, you know, drivers behave differently when there's different materials and there's different lighting and there's, and I think pulling up to this, I think, is going to be a much different experience for most people that go into these, or use these, utilize these, these spaces. I'm sorry, the second question was...
Oh, for snow removal.
Snow removal. You know, so, with, and, and Gideon and staff had raised that as well, I think we had always planned to sort of remove it to the rear of the parking, and, and it just got bigger by, by 23 feet or so, actually, I think a little bit more. So, we'll, we'll plan to sort of, you know, clear it there, and, and I would say, don't hold us to this exactly, we are trying to figure out in the front, maybe some sort of radiant, you know, option, where, where, you know, you can, you can sort of, because, you know, I'll tell you, we, our experience is the cost over five years of doing this, you know, to put some radiant on it. We have full solar, you know, on the roof, which, which is, you know, sets up nicely for, for this, so, but we think, you know, that the management of these facilities are pretty professional.
And also, just to speak to the constraints and with the new community path that's being, you know, finalized on both sides of that road, they've agreed to, the sidewalk is constrained there, and so that's actually going to be, you know, basically, it's creating a better pedestrian and bicycle connection up to the park along their frontage, which is a, it's a big, it's a big win from that perspective, because today, there's a pinch point, and so the sidewalk on the town's right-of-way will expand into their properties, so that from that perspective, it's a safer environment, and then there'll be some, you know, clear indications of the sidewalk continuing across the mouth of the driveway, not like it is necessarily today, and it's a much narrower driveway.
I guess my concerns would be line of sight, and then people who are not familiar with driving the vehicles that they're driving to the storage facility, you know, all kids involved. That's, that's, that's the only thing I want to do. I don't need an answer, and I don't necessarily need a landscaping plan, because I don't have the experience to say like, oh, this is where that's going to be.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, it's, it's legitimate, and I, you know, listen, I think, I think, you know, we'll be out of business pretty quickly if we're building these things, and, God forbid, hitting kids, you know what I mean? So, so, you know, we're, we're hoping that we can get through this process, and folks will have a good memory of us in Watertown, so some of the other towns that call might say a good thing or two about us.
Any other questions from members of the audience? In which case, we should maybe move to a motion.
All right. A move that the Planning Board recommended to the zoning board of appeals, that the proposed project meets the criteria set forth under Section 9.03(c), 9.05(b), 5.07, and with the general purpose of the ordinance, we recommend conditional approval of a special permit with site plan review under Section 5.01, 5.05, and 6.01.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, you are through and go on to the zoning board in a couple of weeks, I guess.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
So, moving right along.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, our next order of business has to do with, uh, Arsenal Yards and minor amendment to, uh, Building B facade.
It's not a daily plan.
Who's listening?
Site plan help more you can refer to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that's true.
Down to the hardcore here.
All right. My name is Alejandra Miranda with Boylston Properties. Uh, and we're here before you to discuss the proposed minor modification to the B-one facade at Arsenal Yards. Uh, to orient you, B-one is the hotel and retail building located at the main entrance to Arsenal Yards.
A little slower.
At the corner of Arsenal Street and Bond Street. Um, as most of you know from the tours we did in December, we take, uh, great pride in the quality of our design and construction of our buildings. Uh, we took this as an opportunity to both simplify the hotel facade while also vastly improving the first-floor retail experience. So, with me tonight is Jonathan McPhee from Troika. Studio Troika did the design, uh, for their, uh, first-floor improvements. He'll walk us through the changes, uh, elevation by elevation. And when we're done, we're happy to answer any questions or comments you guys have.
Good evening. So, there's been a few architects that have been involved in this, as I'm sure you're aware. Um, and the general area that we've, um, been working with, um, both Boylston Properties and, uh, the Wilder Company on, is sort of the first-floor retail zone. So, it's, um, what we've got here in these drawings is what was originally presented above and what is the proposed, um, revision below. So, this face here faces, um, is north-facing Arsenal Street. And in that, I'm not sure why this keeps dropping out on you. Um, but in that, um, it's, hmm, we're doing good if you can't see it. This was happening earlier as well.
It's just very touchy.
Touchy. So, um, do they have, oh, you've got them in front of you. Okay. So, um, you'll see on the first-floor, uh, fitness quarter, uh, that's there, that there's a glassier, um, street-facing storefront element. Uh, there's a public space in the inside. These retail tenants are back from that front facade so as not to be so much of a strip mall, but to be more of a public gathering space. Um, so, this glass, um, gives a nice visual, uh, both along the street and the sidewalk that's there. The bike path runs by in front of that. Um, up above, some of the colors were simplified. Um, this is the hotel area up above. Um, some of what we refer to as eyebrows, these white, um, uh, what do I wanna say? Um, elements that are up there have been changed back to gray. So, there's a little more balance in the facade, um, on that. On the east facade, this is the side where the entrance, the street-level entrance to the hotel is on the left-hand side. Um, again, on the front, uh, we've, uh, modified the storefront, um, similar in scope and scale, but just a different, um, configuration. The entrance into the hotel has been reduced in terms of the amount of glass, but the canopy has been enlarged in that area. Again, the colors that are up above, sort of the metal panel and the fiber cement panel, uh, on the facade has been simplified. And then, on the west elevation, uh, this one here, again, similar approach to what's been done. Um, but you'll see better through, uh, the renderings as we jump ahead here a little bit, that that elevation has been enhanced with, uh, some additional plantings. Um, Boylston Properties, uh, is intending to widen that, um, path circulation where the bike path comes through by two feet along that edge. Um, and then, they've also incorporated, um, along with signage for, uh, the tenants out front, this, um, mural, which is part of their, uh, language as, that goes through Arsenal Yards. Um, they've done these beautiful murals, uh, in several places throughout the, uh, sort of the campus neighborhood. Um, and then, oop, and then on the right-hand side in that image, um, there's a new door and canopy there as well as sort of secondary access to one of the tenants out front.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. On the right-hand side, say that again.
On the right-hand side there, there's a secondary, um, access to a tenant that's out front. And it can't be that. So, it activates that elevation a little bit more. And then, um, I'm flipping through these quickly just to get to a couple of different things. Part of the, um, proposal here also with the facade out front is to delineate, um, between the first-floor, uh, fitness retail and the floors above that of the hotel. Uh, we've proposed a perforated metal panel, uh, that gives some, um, texture and, uh, character. You'll see it in, on the, uh, left-hand side here in white. Um, it's a white painted perforated panel, um, sort of like, uh, scales on a fish, uh, that have a, a, uh, texture to them. And there is a vertical light that's in those. Uh, those panels are capped at the top so that there's no light bleed up above. Um, but it faces out, uh, toward, toward the street front. And then here, uh, just adding in to give you a little bit more of a plan perspective, on the west side, this is the, uh, the, um, bike path and the public right-of-way, um, on the west edge, uh, where additional planting beds have been added. The mural's added over there as well. Um, we've listed some of the plant varieties just to give a sense of, um, scale and texture and color, uh, both perennials, evergreens, and some grasses that are over there. Um, I'll just flip back quick to sort of give you a, a better sense of the overall, this image from the west, um, still hotel, hotel up above, um, showing some of the signage that's being proposed on this, um, both out at the street as well as the blade signs on the building. Um, again, part of the overall approach to this is a little bit more, um, professional, less strip mall, um, look so that it really fits into the Arsenal Yards, um, palette, uh, that the developer has put together. And then, this gives a little bit of sense of nighttime view and lighting. And I think, Alejandra, unless I'm missing something, that that's the majority of the elements that, um, we want to find?
No, I think that, that sums it up, I think.
So, you know, when you look at this out of context, like when it was delivered last week, you think to yourself, why are they changing all these materials? And I understand trying to tie the base together more as, as a unit, so to speak. But, um, it's really hard. I, I don't know about my colleagues here, but it's hard to remember what some of the other materials are like. And we've, we've done a lot of material changes. And, um, I hope this is all recorded in somewhere, uh, in the final set of drawings, you know, that show. But, um, I don't know how this relates to any, any of the other buildings. I mean.
Within the, um, development?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of finishes or changes. So, and I'm not asking you to go through all the other buildings, but I mean, the question is, you know, it's, it's hard to follow all this, is the point.
Okay.
And this is a huge development, as we all know. But if we keep changing various buildings, it's gonna be a little tough to tie it all together. So, I'm just a little concerned about what the big picture is now.
Yeah, I don't think they're.
Fair amount, fair amount of change for a building that's already under construction.
Fair enough. Uh, I think the major change here was the, uh, we got rid of a lot of the intermediary breakups between the storefronts and created that, uh, very clear and transparent, uh, exterior storefront on the north side.
But I mean, just out of interest, why would one have even, in this particular drawing, why would you have even touched the upper floors?
To try and simplify, uh, the facade a little more as we got into it.
Aren't we beyond simplification? I mean, this is under full bore construction. I mean, it's a little late to be, I'm just tired, you know, we're just getting a little, you keep coming back. And it's a great project and all that, but it's just a little tiring to continually see these changes and not quite knowing the reason behind it. Okay? It's that simple.
I have one, I have one question for you. On, on the upper facade, um, it's a color, it's a color change, correct?
Correct. There's the corrugated metal panel.
Oftentimes, if they had done a color change, we would've reviewed that at the, and, and, you know, there would've been a determination on whether it was a minor modification.
Does that mean it wasn't looked at carefully enough to begin with?
The.
Why are we looking at your color changes at this moment? This is, uh, you know, halfway through the building already.
It's a total change, too. That's, that's my.
So, so, it may be fine, but I'm just raising the question. You know, this board doesn't have to continually relook at new finishes continually, okay? There's some limit here, I think.
I think building off of what, um, Jeff was saying, too. I think, you know, as you know, I, I live next door. I did my site visit at my dining room table looking outside. And, um, at the west side. And, and as I thought back to when we talked about the color and the palettes last time, you guys were good enough. You brought in all the boards and all that stuff. And if my memory serves correctly, one of the, the reasons why the colors were what they were was it was trying to serve as a transition from the older buildings, the older brick buildings that are on Arsenal Street, the, the elderly apartments, um, the Harvard Vanguard building, and then a transition to the more modern buildings as you worked into the Arsenal Yards. And I think that with this, do you have a sample of this gray, this light gray that's gonna be of the main part of the upper floors?
I think we do.
Like, the first-floor thing?
I think we do.
I think, I like what's being done with the first floor. I have a couple of questions about it. But I have to agree with Jeff. I think on the, the upper floors, it's like, why, why change it? So, 'cause it looks almost white in a lot of these things. And I think that's gonna be pretty stark, um, of a change.
So, which, which, um?
So, this, the main, this, we, just the west side is an example.
Gotcha. Molly, can you speak to that one? Just on these boards. So, the one that you're referring to is the, um, the gray.
The west side. So, the big, the field, the field color, Molly, yeah.
I believe it's this here.
'Cause it looks white in this. That looks white in this.
The composite.
That's the corrugated metal panel, right?
For the dark.
Are you on the front foot side or the side?
This one says color, corrugated colored gray.
Oh, that one.
Yeah. That's that.
Yeah.
It's more of a gray, okay. And is this Hampton Inn sign illuminated?
The sign on the, on the west side, right?
The large one?
The large one up, up top? It didn't look like it was in the, the nighttime.
No, it's, it's still there.
Still there.
No, he's asking.
Is it illuminated at night?
I, I, I thought it was just a, um, wall sign.
Just a wall sign?
That's just a wall sign. So, the wall sign's the four banners and then the, uh, graphic on the east side. The lit sign is under the drive aisle and over the canopy on Bond Street.
Yeah. And then, the panels on the first floor, the panels you were describing that have the, the lighting in them, just above the, the windows? The way, how bright are they? You know, that faces, doesn't, it faces residences there, that the elderly apartments are right there. And they're only, you know, less than a football field away. So, what kind of light impact are those residents gonna have as they, they look over towards it?
Good question. They're not intended to be overly light. Middle, but they're, um, they're black even until the light of the illuminated portion would be like a white letter that's on there. They're not meant to be a branded sign by the panel.
Yeah.
So, they're meant to be, oop.
They're protecting signs?
So, it's, they're not meant to cast a lot of light off of that sign itself.
So, but the panel, does the panel have light behind it? Is it?
The panel does have light.
So, it's just like a, like a light?
It's a perforated panel. Here's the perforated panel here.
Okay.
So, this would be a white painted.
Yeah.
Panel with a light behind it.
Okay.
It'll give a glow.
So, it's just a glowing type light? It's not a very bright?
No, it's not.
It's not meant to illuminate the back. It's still just a soft.
Okay. Just like a accent type thing, okay.
Accent lighting. It's not meant to protrude outward.
Yeah. Like I said, I, I think the, the first-floor thing, I like the changes to the first floor, the more of the glass. But the color, changes to the color palette in the upper floors, I think where we were is better, you know, the original.
I wasn't prepared to say that, but, uh, I mean, it's just, it's the, the changes which, which is what's tough.
Yeah, if, if I, uh, Andrew Coppellotti with Boylston Properties, if I might, Jeff, and I think your, your point is, is well-taken. I believe that some of the simplification of the colors up above, I think, was in really direct response to the changes at the first floor. And I think because of the, sort of the creation of that more glass, uh, I think the architectural team felt like maybe simplifying that color palette a little bit up above was, uh, another way to sort of create better definition between the first floor and that, that sort of glass box retail environment and the upper floor. Um, I, I don't, uh, I, and again, and the other thing we probably didn't do a good job of here is sort of showing you this building in context to, to Building C, which was, is sort of to the east. Nothing is, or, nothing has changed on Building C. I think, again, we've done a, uh, we've a thoughtful job about trying to get, you know, this building, uh, the hotel, to look a little more, uh, uh, have a little more contrast, if you will, to the apartment building, which is just to the east. Again, recognizing that they're, uh, very different uses within the same development.
So, it's really not our business, but is this all in time to not change the schedule? I mean, these are a fair number, number of changes here in terms of.
Yes, I, I think your question, I'd flip the question around. Your question should really be, why weren't we here ninety days ago? So, we, to get your approval before we might've maybe stepped off the curb a little bit, pardon the pun, on ordering and, and sort of advancing the construction. So, yes, it's, uh, we're still on, we're still on pace to have the hotel open in September. Um, seven months from now, you, you'll start to see the facade come together in the next probably sixty days. And so, yes, we're, um, we're, we're here a little, uh, a little late or later than we probably should've been. But again, some of it, some of that is driven by the, the retail environment and our, uh, trying to get those retailers on board and sort of the strategy that we're, we've sort of adopted with the fitness concept and creating that sort of interior waiting area for those, for those fitness tenants. And so, um, as I think you're all aware, the, the, the retail leasing environment is, is a difficult leasing environment. And so, in reacting to some of that difficulty in leasing the retail, leasing the hotel will not be a problem. I think we've, uh, we've kind of sort of created this glass box concept on the first floor.
So, how much of the first floor is really about fitness?
Uh, I believe that, uh, six, or, all six tenants, I think, will be fitness tenants, yes. So, uh, or fitness-related. Uh, so, what, do we have those interior details? That interior elevation?
While he's looking that up, I also wanted to just give you an update. We did reach out to David Gamble, um, shared the original plans and then also the final plans that were submitted. And, um, he, he is traveling, but we did have a conversation with him. And he felt that the, all the changes were minor in nature and from his perspective, from a, from a design perspective. And going back to his original, um, comments about this building, he identified, you know, a number of concerns about the, the number of changes in, in color, um, throughout the building. So, you know, I, I think he actually even called out those eyebrows or whatever you wanna call as a, a concern. And I, and the board had talked to that, but at the time, that was the design that they wanted to put, move forward, and you approved it. Um, so, they, they are coming back with a more, um, consist, less colors and, uh, more similar materials on the upper area. Um, so, I, I just wanted to give you that update from, from us and from, uh, David Gamble as far as, considering it as a minor amendment. Um, and then also, um, they, they glossed over quickly, but the, the changes to the front, the first-floor facade also substantially improves, like the, the multi-use path connection, um, that would go to the park. Um, the previous approval for that area had a set of stairs because they were envisioning potential tenants on that side as well. Um, but because of the change, um, and again, that, that area would've changed, there's a lot of area on the first floor that was designed to change with staff review and architectural review because it was based on tenant. And so, when they made, when they got rid of that, when the tenant spaces became. when the tenant spaces became more deep, those stairs became not useful for any type of pedestrian users. And so there's a multi-use path in that landscape there where before there was none. So there's some, I think, improvements to the site layout on the first floor. And then from the perspective of the actual design of the building, we looked at it and David Gamble looked at it. And there are changes, but from a perspective of how we would determine if it's major or minor, meaning that you review it and say, yes, it's okay to move forward with the change, or it's major, meaning it has to, or not major, but it's not a modification. It's an amendment, then it would have to come back to the board as a hearing.
So though we haven't seen it, you're reporting that Gamble's report is positive?
It was two verbal conversations and an email saying this is a minor change, so it wasn't something...
Yeah, I think, and we probably didn't do a good job of sort of touching upon the changes to the plan. But there is four feet of grade change from the, what would be the northwest corner along Parkside Drive heading back up. And to Gideon's point, by eliminating the retail tenant that would have been on that west side, we've eliminated the need for those flat landing areas. And I think that that then allowed us to add that green landscaping and widen the shared pedestrian bike path because that is also the main connectivity for the bike path getting back down Parkside Drive into the park. So, and these pictures that are here on the screen sort of give you a sense of how, in this sort of shared fitness concept, you're now entering this sort of, this waiting area where you'd maybe congregate before, after class. And then, as opposed to entering the fitness provider from the street, you're now inside this sort of, if you will, glass box. And then that gives us an opportunity to create some community around the fitness concept.
And who is Troy Aikman?
We're the architects that have been working on this fitness.
Oh, I see, okay.
In conjunction with, you know, obviously PCA, the master architect, and group on the hotel architect. No shortage of architectural invoicing going on.
And then one last piece to speak to the colors of gray. Unfortunately, printing, so the original metal, which was the primary body of the building, was also a gray metal panel. But it had different lines on the, on the print job. But I, I don't know if, you know, the detail of that. They were always a softer gray, but it might have been slightly darker. I don't, they didn't spec it out. They didn't give us a number of the gray. But there was, there was two tones. I think that the lower panel was a slightly darker panel. And so, did you feel that you wanted to not have the two tones as well? As, you know, I'm just trying to speak to those since they're talking of color.
Yeah, the idea on that was to simplify the overall variety of finishes on there and create a little bit more balanced palette by eliminating one of those grays and balancing out the...
You have to bump that wire again, I think.
So we're actually not seeing a plan of this level. But it's, it's circumferential circulation all the way around inside? We're not seeing this plan.
Can you go back to the...
Which one?
If you do, in fact, the ceiling plan, it'll show you what the... It's just the first floor. Instead of the retailers being out on Arsenal Street, we created about a 12-foot-deep corridor. So you'll see this here. This is still retail, you know, heading north to south. What we've done is instead of moving a traditional inline retail...
Where are we seeing this? Nowhere. We've not seen this, these, have we seen these drawings?
They're in the, they're in the middle.
Not what I got. I didn't see any, no. Didn't have any of that.
So Jeff, I don't believe we prevent, thinking that this was primarily about the facade changes, we didn't provide these...
But I mean, it has something to do with the interior circulation. That's what, that's what we're getting at. That's one of the reasons you're changing it, I think, right?
Correct, correct. You're right. The package probably should have included these floor plans so that you can get a sense of...
So I would just say, I think, you know, if we approve this, which you probably will, I think we have to be real careful about ongoing changes here. It's just, it's tough to keep track of this. But I did not know this is what the inside looked like. Interesting.
How do you, is that like shared, is that communal retail space that ends up being part of the GLA for the tenant? How's that treated with... I mean, I don't...
It's a shared amenity.
It's a shared amenity, yeah. Almost a common area of sort of...
Yeah, so you could, just, so you could go to, if we have a juice bar or med spa at the end, you could go there. You know, or Payson could walk out of his house, go over there, grab a juice, and sit in that. You could, so it is a communal space, but it's also serving as a, you know, an amenity to those folks as well as you're going to a spin class. That allows for those people to stage before they go into their spin class. So this is really going to house the boutique fitness, which is now really what's catering to folks now. They like to have a variety of options. And we think the, that space provides a multi-use for both those tenants and the public and our, even our customers at the hotel as well as the residents in the apartments. So we think it serves multiple users.
Sort of like the hours are based on the longest hours of any individual tenant, kind of thing?
Correct. That will open, the juice bar opens at seven, and the last gym class is at 8:30. It'll be a seven to eight-thirty space.
Just one detail. Is it not clear that Buildings 1 and 2 are connected? They aren't on this plan.
They are, you mean the connected?
Yeah, the first floor, that's, it's B1 and B2. This is the first floor.
Talking about the site...
Your site plan only showing the first floor.
You removed the connector so you can see how you access the... Because there's still like ride by, whatever you mean.
Real question is how Buildings E1 and 3 are coming along. That's what I'm excited about.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jeff, which buildings?
Well, the theater buildings.
Oh, the theater, well, we have good news. We heard from the theater operator today that he's hoping to be open next week. So pending, pending Board of Health approval, we think Building should, should be fine. And then the other significant news that just to the west of that is City Works that's sort of on that prominent corner of Building E, and they're hoping to be opening, I believe it's the 8th of March.
How many theaters are involved in it?
There are seven screens. Almost 800 seats. I was in just about a week ago. All the seats are, it looks, looks fantastic.
So, sorry, I have just one more question about the architecture. So, I'm looking at the east elevation and the difference between the original and the proposed. It looks like there's like kind of a greater, a larger cantilever now, or at least kind of a notch out of that second floor than there was before. Is that...
It's leaving.
That's the perspective. You see it actually turns in the, there's a little bit of an angle that returns in the originally approved?
Yeah.
That hasn't changed. That's still the terrace that was there. Just, you see it...
It didn't show up in the rendering is what I'm seeing there. That wall's still there. None of that changed.
Okay, so the notch out of the building at the corner that you see in the rendering, the first rendering in the package, that was always there?
Yes.
Correct.
So you'll see there where there's like two umbrellas in the top here, and then down here, it's just that setback is the same. For some reason, it just didn't show up in this rendering. Good catch.
See how that, sorry, see how that facade kind of angles back in the top? So I think it's the angle at which that model was cut, I think, when they did that axon.
All right. Anything else?
No, I think seeing that gray there, just, it looked white here. So, you know, I think that, that helps. Because that gray is actually closer to the light gray in the, that's in the parking garage. So it looked a lot more of a stark change when we looked at the printed thing. So having, having those here was, was very helpful.
No, I can understand, like, if you go through the exercise, if you were to cut the first two floors off of the proposed and stick them on the original, I understand right away why you'd want to do the upper-level changes to make it more compatible. Definitely balance it better. Yeah, the color changes, the simplification, even the balcony rails that used to be kind of metal-looking rails that now look like they're plexi or glass kind of echo the ribbons of the glass down below. So I, I can see if you made the change in the first floor, it kind of begs the upper floor change. Yeah, I think it's all good.
I think to Jeff's point earlier, too, if we get to this point on Building C, it'd be helpful to see Building B next to it and Building C so we can kind of see how the progression goes.
If I may, I'm managing Building C. We're not changing anything. Okay?
Not changing anything.
I'm managing C. We're not changing anything, so. I promise, I promise.
You're recorded, you know.
You raise your right hand?
He's not affiliated with the...
Do you have other questions? Entertain a motion here?
Well, there's no staff report to reference, but I will venture, make a motion that we approve the minor amendment to the Building B facade as shown tonight.
Do these go on to the zoning board?
No, actually, this is just a determination that this is a minor amendment and can move forward as a building permit. And so, and it's unusual. So in our purview, the Director of Department of Community Development has the purview to make a determination. But in this case, we wanted the board to review that and make that determination as well because it, it was more than minor, minor changes.
So this does not go on to the zoning board?
No, it's, you make a determination, it's done.
Okay. Well, I'll move that we agree with the planning staff's assessment of this as a minor amendment to Building B facade.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Good, good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
So our last order of business.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Yeah, it was very helpful having that. I don't know, that's the last thing.
Our last order of business is to say goodnight to the councilors. Is to, a reappointment of Jason Cohen to, to be the planning board member of the CPC, Community Preservation Commission.
Oh, it's for the CPC, oh, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposition.
You're approved.
You're approved.
Thank you. How many more years? Three, I think. I think it's three years.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you, Gamble. See you next time.
All right. So this one I got to keep.
I find this particularly interesting. Sheet is enormous amount of information in it. But I mean, we got them, I mean, the building's the same size. They just push it on the bigger. Perfect.
Surprised.
Interesting that it has some favorable reaction. Nice.
Yeah, yeah, well, they were ready.